Nobody's here but. I wanted to do that. Is this me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the land and the United States of America, interior republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone recording the meeting? Thank you. And Mr. Boyer, may I have a call?
Mrs. Herantzen.
Here.
Mr. Hershey.
Here.
Mrs. Coon.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Shippers.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Torres.
Here.
Mrs. Zabinski.
Here.
Eighteen and ten minutes.
Our upcoming media meetings, there will be a finance and facilities workshop on tomorrow at 5:30 here in the boardroom. And our next committee of the whole meeting is April 8th at 4:45 also here in the boardroom. And we will be holding an executive session after tonight's meeting for a legal matter. Liaison report, Berks County intermediate meeting. Mr. Hershey?
We have not had a meeting since the last report. We have a meeting on Thursday.
Thank you. BCTC, Mrs. Torres.
The last meeting was February 28th and due to our finance meeting, I wasn't able to attend. So Ms. Rodriguez actually attended it, but I can read her notes that she has sent me. The program recognized for passing audits consistently three years in a row. The ACF auditors recognize it's one of the top three programs audited in the USA. BCTC students will be able to volunteer at St. Luke's soon and gain a co-op with them as well. PennDOT is a third-party testing. Mrs. DeHart, maps drawn, applications are done, laid out how we have a two-step process for an internal audit. By early May, we'll have an answer. Skills USA, April 3rd to the 5th, winners move on to nationals and students develop in states. And April 10th to the 12th in New York City, six students in national business plan competition and run a regional event in Utah.
Great. Berks EIT, Mr. Boyer?
No report. We meet next Thursday, the 20th.
Mrs. Zabinski, Wade.
Thank you. The WAVE Board met today at noon. The biggest thing discussed is the Blue and White Party, which is on Friday, April 19th, at the Planetarium. If you go onto the website, you can click on ways to purchase tickets or be a sponsor. That night, they will be honoring Bill Glenn and Kristy Gage. Dr. Liski came to the meeting today and demonstrated the electric car that students in the engineering classes have built, which WAVE contributed to. Have any of you seen it? Have you seen it? It's so cool. Have you seen it? And they have a camera that they can attach to it. It's like a, it's not what I was envisioning. It's like a little go-kart. And they're going to try maybe even driving around the track and film football or athletic events, whatever. You know, I thought it was really neat. He seemed really excited about it. Dr. Liski has also expressed an interest in replacing Kurt. I say Minnick. Is it Minnick or Minnitch? They said Minnitch at the meeting today. So, okay, Minnitch. Position on the WAVE Board. That's pending approvals and that sort of thing. They did find a new treasurer, but they're always looking for board members with human resources experience, small business experience, that sort of thing. They do need help with setup and tear downs for the Blue and White Party. I think sometimes students help with that. As I reported previously, they did meet with Dr. Jones about raising funds for Senior Day. The chocolate bar fundraiser, Mr. Shippers mentioned last meeting, is winding down. They are going to have a Tervis Tumblr fundraising sale. You're going to have to order them in advance and then they'll come in. So they were discussing ways, if you remember, to fund Senior Day. It's approximately $2,500, I think, the cost. And these Tervis tumblers, that should raise some of the money. But Dr. Jones did commit that even if district funds need to be used, the event will continue. He'll make sure of that. They have $10,000 in EITC funds to spend before June. I actually need help understanding what that is exactly. Because, I didn't ask at today's meeting, but I was wondering if there's $10,000 that needs to be spent before June.
So we know Dr. Woodard and I could both, Dr. Woodard has a lot of experience with that and serves on, I think, in the other, on another, her home district serves on their foundation. So very familiar. She's written EITC submissions and project summaries. Yeah, we can connect with you.
Well, just because there's $10,000 there that needs to be spent by June. I don't know, Rachel, do you know if there's, because you were on it last year, are there guidelines for what it can be used for? Because I see there are pretty much.
There are guidelines. So I actually had asked Ms. Cade if she could just confirm how much money was still remaining since Molly left, because it does need to be spent. So I put that on her radar with a couple of projects that have already been approved that if we need to continue to spend money on those prior approved projects, we can. Because it's really late now to try to be able to get new projects approved at the state level. By June, something, sometimes things can take months to get approved. So we probably can buy some more elementary robotics or, you know, or believe it or not, calculators at the high school has been a project that's been approved. Some different stuff down at STEM. Those kinds of things have already been approved. So we probably need to get together some orders for that. So there's a large amount of science veneer equipment that you can do labs, similar to the pocket lab that we did the other day. You can use it for multiple uses. So that's the kind of stuff that we just need to work on. So I put it on her radar, that time was ticking. So I can continue to meet with her as well, to try to give her some ideas. But I'll be glad to sit down with you and talk about BITC.
I did report also at their board meeting today about the curriculum meeting that I attended last week. And I mentioned some of what you're doing to meet the new state requirements in science. And then they mentioned that there's a grant that has to do with, is it steel or?
Steel.
So it's, I'm glad that's on their radar now because it looks like they may have a grant that then could apply money towards some of the supplies you might need for that new curriculum. There's no meeting in April and I think that's everything.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Zabinski. And just to piggyback two things, on the Senior Day, we met as well as an administration group. And I know some of the members met with Dr. Jones. Good news is Mr. Boyer has secured that our busing provider, which is GMN, right, will cover the cost of the bus that day that takes the kids around to the schools. They're going to donate that. So that cuts the cost a little bit. We're working on the meal and I think we have some strategies to solve it, but kind of work through it this year. So we're, you know, it'll still be a great day, bring it back a little bit in cost by that donation. Still make a good day for the students. And I did invite, I didn't have a date yet, but I asked Dr. Liski if maybe this spring, maybe 15 or 20 minutes before a board meeting, if he would, with some students, maybe bring the car. And depending if they get the greenhouse project up and running this spring, maybe it'll be a nice chance to meet us. We could meet in the back and see both. So maybe play it out by year and in May, we could have both demonstrations and kind of, any board members that are interested could come a little bit early and we could see those. So, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Legislative report, Mr. Hershey?
Yeah, the legislative report that was in the agenda is from February. There were a couple of things in it that I thought were kind of interesting. As, I mean, they're all bills that who knows what will actually get passed eventually. But just as we've talked about mental health over the time I've been here, I guess, there's a couple of different legislations in there for allowing students to have three excuse mental health days, requiring mindfulness, 15 minutes in schools, which just says to me that that's obviously a discussion happening much more than just here. I thought that had a very good budget.
There is some money in the governor's budget for facilities, for schools. Do we know how that would impact us with the refurbishment of Flannery Field and the other budgets we're looking at?
So there's a current grant out for renovation projects. Athletic fields don't really fit into what the criteria of that is. We are in the midst of trying to figure out if we're applying for one. We have an application, Mr. Captain Selly and I have an application started. It's open until, I believe, May. So we're still looking forward. There's some criteria that you need to meet before you can actually, if you even should apply, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So we're still going through that criteria. We have about half, like I say, half the grant filled out already. But there is a component in there that has to deal with free reduce and kind of harbor. So we're still working that out as far as the days by the board. We have some projects on that board. I don't think, because there is specific criteria, I don't think the renovation project that Flannery Field would quite fit.
Mr. Boyer and I met with Senator Schwenk about a week or two ago. And then a gentleman from her office followed up with Mr. Boyer about some possible funds. We can at least explore if the board chooses to do the West Reading playground, the Elementary Center playground. So we don't know that there's funds yet, but there's a source that we might be able to pursue to see if there'd be some support for that project. So definitely more to follow in terms of any state funds.
And last but not least, PTA, Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you. PTA did have a meeting March 6th over at the Hills. We reviewed membership and our membership is still sort of kind of staggering. So we were thinking about maybe going back to the old days where we sent out envelopes to everybody, but not just K through 6, but K through 12, because then that would actually convince us to spend a little bit more money here at the high school because we always kind of like spread it out. We're trying to get more involvement across the board, basically. So I do know that there are a lot of parents that still want to help out at the high school level, but that kind of levels off because they get to get older. We discussed nominating committees because our president is going to be stepping down. So change of the cards is going to be changed. So we're going to have some openings. So if you know of anybody who wants to join, they can actually become part of the committee. We discussed upcoming events. This past weekend, we had the Glow Dance. That was a big thing for the kids in 56th grade over at West Reading. We also had the West Reading Book Fair. I have not heard anything as to how that went, but it at least does pretty well over there. The upcoming events are the Roller Skate Party. That is going to be April 12th at 5:00 p.m. over at the Skateaway. Most of the discussion was staff appreciation week, which is coming up very quickly. It's actually occurring rather early this year. It's going to be April 15th through the 19th. But I'm going to stress to administration that they put a bug into the other administration that that is pretty early for us because coming off of Easter break, we really technically only have two weeks to get everything done by then. And trying to get parent engagement coming off of a break is a little tough. It's usually nice to have it at the end of April. So going into, you know, the following year, if we could, I know it's tough with all the testing coming up, but that is a big week for us. So, and then the other thing that's coming up is the book fair over at the Hills. We are hoping to get that going May 15th, 16th, and 17th. And that's bringing that ship. So, I'm sorry, I seem correct. There is one more thing. They want to do more things over at West Reading. So they want to try to do an ice cream social for the kids over there with Mr. Softy. So they're looking around the May 13th timeframe. So other than that, that's bringing that ship. The next meeting will be held April 10th and that will be at 9:30 over at the Hills.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. And we will move on to routine approvals of the treasurer's report and payment of bills. And we will do this by a voice vote. So it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the February 26th, 2024 board of school directors meeting minutes, the treasurer's report for the month of February, and payment of bills for the month of February 2024 as listed in the financial packet. May I have a motion?
Please.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I will now turn it over to Mrs. Scoboria for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Ms. Tierney said that students are so busy accomplishing things this meeting, it just didn't work out to get our students here. So I have a few quick announcements that I'd like to share and then we'll move to the agenda. So one, just want to give a special thanks to Mr. Dramby, who chaired the event. We have many other teachers involved, administrators, several board members were involved, community volunteers, and then our amazing students. And that's with the mini-thon event, raised over $44,000 and just an incredible, you know, community. I was there for the community portion. I know we saw several others. And so I did see Mr. Dramby today in the hallway, got a chance to speak with him and thank him on behalf of the entire community for all he did. He was quick to credit his team, as he always does, but we know there was a lot of effort on his part as well. So thank you all. Don't miss the senior high musical, Mamma Mia, April 26th at 7:00 and then April 27th, 1:00 and 7:00. So we're all looking forward to that. Winter sports is mostly over, except their girls' basketball team. We wish them luck and that's tomorrow, 5:30 in Altoona. If you check out our Facebook page, we listed how to get tickets and also free radio coverage by WEU as well as a link for a paid subscription to stream. So you can get a one-month subscription, you can then cancel it and you can get the game. So best of luck to the girls. I am taking the trip and look forward to the big game. Spring sports has started, so if you're driving around the campus, you see mostly we had some good weather, got a little bit colder here today, but the spring sports is around. And one thing that's exciting and new is our junior high baseball team has moved over to practices and games at the West Reading Playground. That's in partnership with the West Reading Borough. And again, you know, anything's new, you work through it and there's some things. That field has not been used for that level of baseball play for some time, but their crew has done an amazing job. I think they're actually, Mr. Captain Selly is meeting their crew there tomorrow morning to get the batting cages in behind home plate. And we'll continue to work and learn from this year and then use that to make it even better. First game is April 4th at 4:00. So if anybody's not busy, either here at the board or in the community, we do have a Facebook post to kind of promote this new location, make sure everybody's aware. And I think Ms. Tierney has that coming out at the end of this month. So we thank, you know, our folks over at, our friends at West Reading for the partnership. Got to attend the Junior High National Arms Society and I know Ms. Coon and, you know, headed over to the senior high event tonight. So congratulations to all of our students as well again to Mr. Dramby and Ms. Tierney, who I believe are coordinating the event. So a lot of accomplishment to earn that credential. So congratulations to all of our students. And then I just encourage everybody to, you know, visit our Facebook, our Twitter. There's so many things, it's hard to pick a few. Ms. Tierney and her intern students do a great job of trying to cover, you know, all kinds of different events. So I always encourage the public, if you are following tonight, to, you know, check out what we're doing there and stay in tune with all of our students' great accomplishments. So tonight, we do have a non-voting presentation primarily on special education, but also on homeless and a couple of other related items that all fall into our pupil services. So as always, we're glad to have Dr. Langels here supporting us in that area. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Langel.
Thank you. So as Mr. Scoboria said, I do have a number of items tonight. I'll try to stop in between each one since they really are not related to allow for questions. So the first topic tonight is, my remote's not working, Mr. Oates. Oh, turn it on. Doctor, it's coming in handy. So the first topic tonight is our special education plan. And for those of you that were here two years ago, Dr. Woodard and I actually did our planning together. So the plan is typically every three years, but COVID threw us off. And so with the last time you heard me speak about this and/or read our plan, it was actually at the same time as our comp plan. This time it is different. We're back to what it was pre-COVID. So the special education plan is only one part of the comprehensive plan. The biggest difference between the comprehensive plan and the special education plan is the special education plan does not develop measurable goals. So when Dr. Woodard comes back to you in the full spring of next year to talk about the comp plan, you will hear very measurable, objective goals that have been developed. The special education plan focuses on training. So that's training for staff, students, administration, parents, and anybody else who may be working to support the special education partner. So this plan is due to PDE by May 1st of this year. It will span three years. We update the plan throughout those three years and then we would be back on the cycle to develop a new plan. The neat thing for me this year, for those of you that don't know, I was a special ed teacher in the district initially and was on our planning committee. And then I moved into the administrative role. And this is actually my fourth time developing special ed plans. So I've gotten to see how we built upon things over the years, which I think is actually pretty unique. There's a lot of turnover sometimes in my position. So the fact that I've been able to see it through so many times, I think it's added a lot of value. And a lot of our team members on our committee also have followed the different plans through. So that last bullet there, you'll see that there are similar stakeholders to the special or to the comprehensive plan. However, we're a much smaller group. So Mrs. Taylor was our school board of directors representative. We have administrators, we have parents, we have gen ed teachers, and then of course, special education teachers as well. So this document, for those of you that have never seen this, I did print everybody a copy because it is tricky to see up there. This is a document that comes out every year through the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And it's very telling for us each year. The only hiccup to this data is what you're seeing is from December 1st of 2022. We submit all of our doc, all of our data on December 1st of the year. We will not get this past year's report until next September. So when you write your plan, when you are planning things, you have to guess a little bit on some of your data because you don't get the new updated data until the following year. So the biggest takeaways from this document would be if you look in that first block there, the total special education population in 2022 was 307. So that's about 17% of our total population. I can tell you that for December 1st of 2023, we were up 26 students. So we actually reported 333 students. And the total enrollment went up, I think, 40 students. So we're going to be higher there with our percentage, but we're also up 26 students, which is a significant amount of kiddos. One thing we have seen, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later, but just because I know everybody's head right away went to why is that? We have seen with the pandemic how many students were held in our EI numbers. Last year and this year just skyrocketed with the number of students coming in. So because services were difficult to get for some of our birth to three and then three to five-year-olds, a lot of families chose to hold them, which is now creating bubbles of kids coming through. But again, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. A couple of other highlights, if you look at our autism population, it is significantly higher than the state average. So we're at 18.6. Again, this was back in 2022. And the state is at 13%. This has been consistent in all of my years here. We have always been higher in this category than the state. And then if you look over on the right-hand side, this is the other part I want to point out to you all. That shows what's called least restrictive environment and how we're educating students. Again, I'm going to come back to this later, but to understand it, we determine students based on the percentage of time that they are in general education. So our goal is obviously to get kids out in the general ed environment and curriculum as frequently as possible. And the state does monitor this and it's always an area that we are trying to improve on. So the state wants us to see those, that first column be much higher than it is. They want more kids in the gen environment more frequently. But at the same time, we base those decisions on student needs. So what's right for one student may not be right for another student. And then finally, that bottom box is race and ethnicity that also is reported and looked at. You can see a number of the areas we either don't have data for because our numbers were too low and/or the state as well. Those have been pretty consistent for us over the years as well. So an overview of our staff throughout the district. I have each of the three buildings up there and then what the staffing looks like currently. We have learning support, emotional support, and autistic support in all three of our buildings. We also have life skills support at the junior senior high school. We have two full-time speech therapists. You'll see that West Reading and the junior senior high, she splits her time between those two. And then you'll see the number of paraprofessionals. While that is a snapshot of our current paraprofessionals, we do often have to move them between buildings. So that can change at any time and will definitely change for next school year when we're looking at where student need is. And then at the bottom, I have our district-wide staff. So we have three school psychologists. And thankfully, I have this highlighted a couple of times in here, I think we are fully staffed. We do have a retirement coming up, but we really have been very lucky. That is an area, paraprofessionals, school psychologists, and other related service providers. Districts are really struggling to hire and we have been very lucky there. We have, it says a .5 social worker, but that's just how it's reported within special education because she also services the general education population. So about half of her time is with special education students. We have four part-time occupational therapists. They are all contracted. And by part-time, one of them only works two hours a week. It's just how the contracts work of when they can get into each of our buildings. We have about a third of a physical therapist also contracted and then we have a BCBA who's contracted. And then finally, our transition coordinator. This is a position that we have had to change pretty frequently based on student need. She's at the junior senior high school full-time, but she also has a learning support caseload simply because our numbers are just so high, she also has to have a caseload. So again, the plan really does focus on the least restrictive environment. And that is what are we doing to get our students in the general education classroom with general education peers as frequently as possible? And then up there, I'm not going to read everything to you, but I'll highlight a few of them. One of the things we've recently really tried to put more effort into is having more of our staff trained in what's called differentiated reinforcement. So that is safety care. It gets a bad rep because people think it's physical management and restraining students. That is a component of it, but about 50% of the training is simply on de-escalation strategies and how to not get in power struggles with students, with staff. I mean, it works. It works for all aspects of your life. So we really try to sell it like that. We are getting more and more folks trained. We recently had Stodion be trained, which was pretty exciting because he does work with some of our students in the diversified occupations program. We have a number of paras, a number of gen ed teachers, special ed teachers. And then the other thing that I will also highlight up there is our contracted BCBA. You'll see that annually with her contract, her name is Sharon Kepley. She has been here as long as I have. People don't even know that she's contracted because she spends so much of her time here, but she's brilliant. She's very connected with the Patton verbal behavior project. And she has been incredibly helpful to us in our autistic support classrooms and our emotional support classrooms. Students placed outside the district, this is a huge component of the plan. You'll even see, it talks about incarcerated students and how we're educating them. It talks about students in mental health facilities and how we're educating them. So how this works is I actually remain in contact with the placement wherever a child is, assuming that it's not a residential treatment facility. The communication there is a little different. But anytime a child is placed somewhere, whether it's by us or by the family, we continue to be involved with their education. So they're communicating to us, we're communicating with them, we're attending meetings, whether it's me or a school counselor or perhaps our social worker. And we're always looking for how do we get them again back in our building, the least restrictive environment, when it's appropriate for the child and based on their individual needs. Some strengths and highlights, again, I don't want to read all of this to you, but the plan really does allow us to kind of sell ourselves and say what we're doing that is so good for students. And then it also gives us an area to talk about some of our biggest challenges. So the strengths and highlights, I will highlight the highly qualified paraeducators. We have some pretty phenomenal paraeducators here. Again, they are, they are receiving their required training and many of them go above and beyond this required training. So many of them will get safety care and CPR and first aid, which would fill their 20 hours pretty close. But they're also logging on to master teacher and getting trainings. We in the past few years have started to partner with Patton and then master teacher because we have so many paras that are coming into the school setting and maybe are working at the junior senior high and are suddenly finding themselves in an Algebra II class supporting a kiddo. Well, they haven't had Algebra II in a lot of years, some of them. Well, they haven't had Algebra II in a lot of years, some of them. And some of them never have. So we have the opportunity for them to learn even very specific skills like that. We also, within those master teacher trainings, are offering other things that are very specific to students. So a student with a visual impairment, a student with a physical impairment, we actually can break it down and find very specific trainings. They've been really appreciative of that. And then our extended school year programs are the other one that I will highlight. One thing we do differently here than some other schools because we are so small is we take our fourth graders and we put them at West Reading for their summer programming. And we take our sixth graders and we put them at the junior senior high school for their summer programming. Most other districts that are larger don't have the ability to do that. They typically put them all in one school. But it gets our kiddos an opportunity to get to know the building, relieve some of that anxiety that comes with any kiddo transitioning between the buildings, and meet some new staff, even if it's just the building principal, building secretary. We build that into our ESY programming. Additional strengths. You'll see that first one I do have that our school psychologists are fully staffed. Again, I cannot, every time I go to an IU meeting with other Berks County special education directors, everyone is complaining we cannot find school sites, we cannot maintain our mandated timelines through PDE. We've been very lucky there. Technology, we continue to add technology and then that assistive technology. So those are our kiddos who maybe are nonverbal or maybe just require some additional support with writing assignments. We are seeing more and more nonverbal students, more and more students with significant disabilities. And we are lucky that we can work with the Berks County Intermediate Unit to trial things. We get to trial apps, we get to trial different AAC devices. And what that does for us is it saves us money because we're finding what is right for that child and then we're ordering it as opposed to ordering it and doing a trial and error. So the IU has been really, really helpful to all of Berks County schools with that. This is all of the different goals that I told you have to be developed. And for some of the categories, we have more than one goal. So this is direct from PDE. I don't get to choose these categories. We have goals related to autism, positive behavior supports, paraprofessionals, science of literacy, that's actually new and was just added two years ago, parent training, IEP development, and transition. And then under each goal is a description of what it's going to look like, what the training specifically will look like, who the lead person or position is, what years it will happen, and then who's the intended audience. And then this is a section that is an ongoing kind of progress monitoring from PDE for me. So as we hold a training, we have to upload agendas, we have to upload descriptors. If we did any kind of survey, we can include that in there as well. So our current challenges, I'm going to go through each of these. We have, between the dates of July 1st and January 30th, which was really when I sort of was wrapping up this plan, 37% of our new registrations were students with disabilities. This is not the highest that I've seen, looking at about a six-month block, but it's pretty significant for us right now. This past year, our kindergarten class had approximately 20%, about 20% of students with special needs. So higher than the state average, higher than our overall average as well. And again, we really, that's not specific to YO. All of the county schools are reporting that, the IU is reporting that they've had more students decide to stay back in the IU program for longer because of the COVID pandemic. And we've also seen a lot of students being identified much later than they may have previously. So during the pandemic, parents were not reaching out to their physicians, were not reaching out to the IU for supports and services. This year, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about as well, our early intervention numbers are the highest we've seen with significant needs. So we have 12 students coming into us who already are identified as having autism or multiple disabilities. To be identified with autism or multiple disabilities at such a young age means it's a pretty profound level of autism or multiple disabilities. We have at least six students who are completely nonverbal. So those numbers are causing us to have to look at what will staffing look like, which is coming up, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about. Private placements. So historically, when you have a student that you needed to place for AEDY, which is alternative education for disruptive youth. So that is, you've brought a weapon into school, you've brought drugs into school, you've had a significant fight at school. Those schools are all full. They're either full or they're being incredibly selective in who they will take. So anytime we have a student move into us or a student who has a new need that's causing us to look at an outside placement, those placements are very difficult to find. We have, the intermediate unit allows the directors in the county to communicate with each other. So we'll often reach out and say, hey, I have a ninth grade girl with this level of need. I'm looking for this type of placement. We are seeing more and more schools having to transport an hour, two hours away to be able to find a placement. I don't know what the solution there is, but it's definitely a pretty significant need in the special education world.
Is that something that the ESY can help with?
So some intermediate units do run programs. Our current intermediate unit does not. They do run like a deaf and hard of hearing classroom in the Reading School District, but they're not running any other school-age programs.
Have we communicated with them, the desires?
We're not sure why.
And it's been Dr. Lang was probably 20 years more or less other than a random program. Now, if you go into Bucks County, you go into Chester County, you go, I think, up to Lancaster, Lebanon, you do see a very large footprint of IU programs, and that just not has been the case in Berks.
Correct, no. And it is a consistent request that school districts make.
Does it force us to keep students here in our district who are more at danger than we live in? Maybe danger isn't the right word, but like, you know, do we have such little choice that we end up keeping students in-house that we normally would?
I have not experienced that. But what does occur is, and Dr. Ward and Mr. Spore, you can attest to this. We have a student that needs to be placed. I'm not physically here. I'm going out and trying to sell the student. I'm going out and observing the placement, I'm visiting the family. It's just a process. There's an intake, there's an interview, then you find out if the child is accepted. So sometimes we're going on three, four of those intakes just to be told, sorry, we can't take this child.
These are students that have IEPs where their needs require them to be placed outside the district? Or they've had, they have an IEP and then they've had a behavioral circumstance?
Yeah.
Either one.
AAC devices and instruction, that was what I just talked about with the number of students we're getting who are nonverbal, who are currently here and/or are coming in. The apps are incredibly expensive. And the timing to teach our staff and to teach families how to use these devices is pretty demanding. Our speech therapists are experts, and they're spending the time, but we are really just seeing a lot more time going into teaching, again, staff and families how to use it. Paraprofessional staffing, I don't think I have them fully staffed with paras in probably five or six years. We have 34 total positions, and currently we have seven vacant.
And we're currently paying them what, just to remind you?
It varies. I believe it's starting at $15 an hour.
That's correct.
And again, that's not special to Y Missing. That is pretty consistent everywhere, including the staffing agencies. We've done a lot to try to get people in here. Specifically, we've kind of targeted our community. You know, it's a great job for someone with young children because you can get in after your kiddos have left and you can get home sometimes before they've gotten home. And we've seen some success there, but we continue to post an interview and try to get folks in here. And then we've seen a significant rise in our social emotional needs, which, you know, we've talked at length about some of the mental health initiatives, but we are really seeing a lot more of these students qualify for special education. So oftentimes, when a student has some type of crisis on a weekend and their family takes them to the emergency room, they end up at maybe a kid's feast. And at kid's feast, they get a psychiatric evaluation that says, go back to your school and get an IEP. So they come back to us, we have to do our own evaluation, we determine what the level of need is, and then oftentimes they're qualifying for special education. So I talked about our current challenges and one of them being next year's incoming kindergartners. Those are our current numbers of students coming in. So the intermediate unit runs what's called early intervention transition meetings. We have them every February, and they're a pretty phenomenal way to introduce families who have kiddos with needs to the school. So we have a team kind of descend, they're all virtual now, but on your screen, you would see me, you would see the school counselor, you would see at least one special education teacher, a school psychologist, sometimes one of the building-level administrators. And we just ease all of the questions that that family has. Any of us who have put a kindergartner into school, we all have lots of questions. These families come to us with another set of questions as well, just about their child's individual needs. So this year, we ran 19 different meetings. And that's a high number, but again, last year, I think we were at 20, and the year before, it was significantly less, I want to say 11. So we're seeing a high number, but the real hiccup this year for us is the number of students coming in with severe disabilities. So for autism, we have 12 students already diagnosed with autism, multiple disabilities, one, emotional disturbance, one, and then speech and language, there are five students with speech and language needs. I'm going to talk to you about that, just one second, Mr. Arns. The caseloads, but first I want to highlight what it is we would... I'm sorry, can you go back? I apologize. We would be looking to potentially add an autistic support classroom teacher with a focus on life skills. What this would allow us to do is not send any of those kids out to private schools. We believe that we could service all of them here with an additional provision. We do have a classroom with a bathroom available. Of those students with autism, eight of them are not toilet-trained. And it will be unlikely that they would enter school being toilet-trained. We would look at having our paraprofessional supports and our BCBA supports to remain the same as they are currently. And then there's a whole finance portion to this that Mr. Boyer would be able to speak about tomorrow at the finance committee meeting. But to better understand why this would be needed, it's unusual to be adding a service that we already have. But because there are mandates through PDE in order for us to remain compliant, this is really the only way we would be able to service these kiddos. So under AS classroom or caseload requirements, if you have students who are itinerant, those are kiddos who are in the special education environment less than 20% of their day. So they are in general ed for 80% of their day and then just have a small portion of their day when they're receiving special education services. Supplemental is the bigger chunk of kiddos. Those are kids who are in general ed more than, I'm sorry, less than 20%, more than 80%, they're in the special ed environment. And then our full-time students are in the special education environment 40% or more of their day. Those are the numbers that you're allowed to have on a caseload. So that's not a Y Missing recommendation, that's not where we are based on our needs. That is what the state requires. And we have to report this to the state within the special education plan. You'll actually see it as one of the subsections of the plan when you review it. Okay, Mr. Arns, thank you. So this is a sample of how we monitor caseloads. When I first came into this role, we did not have a great system as to how we monitored caseloads. And so I worked with PDE and some of our staff who are pretty brilliant with Excel, we've now moved it into a Google Sheet. But we have, behind all of those columns of itinerant, supplemental, and full-time, there are formulas behind it which calculate for us exactly how much of their maximum caseload the teacher's allowed to be in. So these are not, how many students are you teaching? This is how many students are on your caseload, and you're in charge of all of their documents. So I have the teachers' actual names. So you're going to see our four autistic support teachers that are at Y Missing Hills right now and their current caseload. So this is right now, who is on their caseload. So you'll see Melissa Loomis is our first one. She has six students currently. If you look over to the right, you'll see they're all full-time. That's what that F means, under full-time autistic support. So she has six total students, that puts her at 75% of her maximum caseload. So she could have two more students with autism on her caseload and still be in compliance. You can be at 100%, you just can't go over. You should roll down a little bit, please. Cara Hyditch is our next one. So she has students seven through 13, so seven total students. And you'll see, she has the S's for supplemental. So those are not kids who are in her room full-time, but she can still only have eight of them. And then she has two full-time students, which puts her at 88% of her total caseload. So we could add another student as well for her, and she would still be in compliance. Go ahead, thank you. Rebecca Holly, another one of our autistic support teachers. So she has nine students. You'll see she has a number of students who are considered itinerant. Those are students who spend at least 80% of their day in the general education environment. But those students, she still can only have 12 little students on her caseload. She's at nine, which puts her at 88%. So assuming that we were adding another supplemental, or I'm sorry, another supplemental kid, we could add one more. Itinerant, I believe I could add two more, and she would be right at that 100%. And then last but not least is Caitlin Gianotti. So you can see, she goes up to student 28. So we have 28 students in that building with autism currently being serviced. You'll see, she's also at six students total, which is at 75%. You'll also note she has all kindergarten students. So last year, we also saw this kind of bubble happen with students coming in with pretty severe needs. So in order to service the incoming kindergartners, we are only losing three fourth graders that are moving up to our fifth-grade building. In order to service them without adding a teacher, we would be putting these teachers over their maximum caseload requirements. Any questions on that? And this document, we actually have for every teacher K through 12 within the special education environment. And it's how I make sure that, one, we're compliant with the state requirements, but two, our staff know and we know, when we have a move-in, who already is high. So we're sharing the wealth of students. And we do that a lot, especially at the junior senior high school. We have a lot of students who are moving in, moving out. And so we're always looking to make sure that no one special education teacher is overtaxed if someone else is lighter on a caseload.
Dr. Lang.
Yes.
Sorry, could you share for the ward? If we are out of compliance, what does that mean? It's not just like that bad.
Yeah, so...
There's...
There could be funding that would be withheld. There could be, there would definitely be an improvement plan. We're regularly, sadly, on improvement plans for different pieces of data. I actually don't know just how bad that could get other than them saying... Other than them saying they would withhold funds. Once I update the document, and you'll see in the special education plan, they monitor everything. So I have to measure every classroom, and then based on the measurements, they tell me how many students can be in that classroom. PDE will come in and will do a walkthrough and monitor, they spot-check. So that will happen with this special ed plan, and it will also happen with the cyclical monitoring, which happens every six years. So that will be coming up in another two years for us again. And they do lots of spot checks. They interview teachers, they interview gen ed teachers, they interview administrators as well as part of that process. Any other questions on what I just shared there? Again, I don't want to say that it's just YO because it's not. The IU had to add an additional day for early intervention meetings this year because the numbers are just so high across the board. So next steps related to the special education plan. If you recall, the special education plan and the comprehensive plan, once that's written, have to go out for public viewing. have to go out for public viewing in a draft form. So it has to be made available to our community for twenty-eight days. We put it on our district website, we put out a hard copy as well here, and we post it on social media. Last time, we had a handful of people that either came and met with me or sent me their input. We do put a Google form on social media to allow anybody to provide input. And again, a number of folks came in and actually met with me and talked about different components of it. I was excited about that, I thought it was nice to hear. One of the community members that came in doesn't have children in the school, never has, and she just wanted to simply learn more about it and give her input. So we do take input, and you'll see when I come back to you all, April nineteenth, I believe that's the Friday before it would be coming to you for board action, you would be receiving an executive summary. And in there, I would include any changes that were related to public input. April twenty-second, I would be coming back ideally with a finalized plan, ready for board action, and then submit the plan to PDE. They have months to review it, they typically do come back to us with necessary revisions, and then by June thirtieth, it has to be finalized. Any questions on the special education plan? It's about, I want to say it's about a fifty-page document this time, the formatting is a little off, so don't quote me on that, but a lot of it is just those tables that I was talking to you about. So a classroom, you can actually see what are the measurements of the classroom, what's the classroom number, how many students are in there, what are the ages of the students who are in there, we have to report all of that.
Just a quick question, you may have answered this already, but you had mentioned that our autism rates are above the state level, but our other health impairment is also about what falls into that category and why are we outpacing the state?
So other health impairment, and according to the state, it has to be two and a half percent discrepant for it to be considered a discrepancy. So that one, we wouldn't have to actually report on that, but other health impairment includes a number of different diagnoses. ADHD falls under other health impairment, which is probably the largest one that you would see, but almost any other medical diagnosis that is affecting a child's ability to be successful in school can fall under other health impairment. And it's only when there's instruction related to it. So sometimes something like an eating disorder could fall under that, there's instruction that is involved here in the school setting for the child to be successful, sickle cell anemia can fall under there. It's mostly medical diagnoses where some type of instruction is needed, not just accommodations for access to the environment.
And a kind of a trend would be maybe that if you're in a community that has strong access to medical services, you know, if you're around hospitals and counseling services, you know, it is more likely that maybe parents will get and access those services even before school or during school. So certainly that would be our community, is where we are fortunate to have a lot of, you know, medical services right here, so that might attract, you know, families as well as the families who do land here then to obtain those services, you know, in conjunction with us.
Okay. So switching gears, if you recall, as part of our mental health action plan, I took over as our homeless liaison, and that was really because it's a time-consuming component that one of our school counselors was managing. So it's allowing one of our school counselors to have additional time in her day to do school counseling duties as opposed to acting as our homeless liaison. So the acronym that you see up there stands for Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness. We are monitored every two years, and that monitoring just happened, so that's what I'm going to talk to you about this evening. Students experiencing homelessness, we typically have anywhere between, we currently only have three students, so I'm sure that that's a question on your mind, but I would say the average each year has been about twenty. So it can be a very temporary situation for a family, only lasting maybe two weeks, but they would still be on our records as considered homeless. These are families who are doubled up, so maybe they were evicted, maybe they had some tragedy occur like a fire, and now they are doubled up with another family, could be a family member, could be a friend. We occasionally do have some families who are residing in hotels or motels, that would also be considered as qualifying under McKinney-Vento. So this is a federal law, and then what PDE did was they developed their own criteria. In true PDE fashion, it's much more restrictive than what the federal law requires, which is the same thing that I see in special education. So they do provide us with a lot of support, which comes from them monitoring each, every two years. This year, our monitoring, I felt, went really well. We don't have our formal report yet, they will come to Mr. Scoboria, but they said it could be another two months. They don't move very quickly on it, but we did get informal feedback, and it was very positive. They really commended us for how quickly we're getting these students enrolled. So we're not allowed to ask for all of their documents. The goal is to not have kids be out of school. If they have some type of crisis going on in the home environment, some instability in the home environment, we want to keep the school day for them as consistent as And the number of services, so we, anytime that we have a child who identifies under the McKinney-Vento Act, we are offering them any and all of our services that we would offer to any student, but then I'm meeting with the family either in person or via phone and offering them additional services. So there are a lot of services and supports in our community that are available to families. It is a requirement that a school district has a homeless liaison who will put those resources in the family's hands. So it could be anywhere from introducing them to realtors who will expedite the process for them, it could be helping them find medical or dental insurance, really anything that the family needs, there is a resource available that I have that I can get to them and then help them secure those services. The only area that we were not in compliance of was where we are advertising the eligibility and then the dispute process. So we have to get that in more of our documents. All of our building handbooks need to have it, and they do not currently, and we have to do this, we have to do this by the start of next school year. And then on our website and our newsletters and our school calendars, we need to be ensuring that families understand what would qualify them under this. Any questions about that? Okay. The other thing I'll add is there is funding associated with this, it's nominal, it's not a significant amount, but if we do run into families, an example would be a student maybe going to BCTC who is homeless currently, who needs work boots. There would be funding that we can use to get them those work boots for them shop at BCTC. So it wouldn't be purchasing things for the student in their home, but if there were things that they needed in their school environment, we would have funding available to support Did I ask, are there any questions on that? Okay. So the last thing that I have for you today is a health and safety plan update. So our health and safety plan was related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have had many of our requirements through PDE, DOH, CDC be dropped as of the beginning of this school year, and now the CDC has come out with an additional change. If you'll recall, we were receiving all of our guidance from the Department of Health, that is no longer happening, we now just follow recommendations from the CDC. This change came out on March first, we stumbled upon it, I was actually searching for something and found it on March seventh, I think it was, and then actually just today is when we were notified of these changes as a school set. So the Department of Health just notified us of these changes. So we're on the ball. Some districts were only hearing this for the first time today, if they didn't catch it on the news or in a Google search. So previously, if you were COVID-19 positive, you were isolated for five days from symptoms onset, so you were out of school, whether you're an employee or a student, you were staying home for those five days. You could then return and wear a well-fitted mask for an additional five days. That has now changed, and I have the exact wording up there, because it is slightly confusing, but to know what we received from the CDC. You can return to normal activities when, for at least twenty-four hours, your symptoms are improving overall. So very subjective, we are not going to make that determination for a student or a staff member, we are simply going to give them the language. And then if there was a fever present, then it's been gone without fever-reducing medication for twenty-four hours. That's a simple one, because that aligns with all of our other policies related to any illness. You should be fever-free for twenty-four hours before returning to school, regardless of what other symptoms you have. And then they are still recommending wearing a well-fitted mask for an additional five days. Our plan would be to start implementing this tomorrow. Our school nurses are aware, we do need to update it on our district website, and we do this on a one-to-one basis, so what happens is we get a phone call, typically I get the staff phone calls, usually happens at, you know, eight o'clock at night or 5:00 AM. Staff says, I woke up sick, or I just got sick, I tested, I'm positive, I give them their dates that they're out. The same thing happens for our students through our nurses. We are getting very few student calls though, but when we do, we talk through what was the symptom start date, and we give them their return date. And then those absences are still medically excused. Questions about that?
You'll update the website, this will kind of be how the nurses then work with those students.
Yeah. I have a question, for if they're out for five days and they can return for, they may return for an additional five days wearing a mask, can they opt for an additional five days to stay out of school? Then will that be an excuse? Or?
So I think if we were looking at that many days, we would take it on a case-by-case basis. Typically, we would get a doctor's note in that case, we wouldn't require it, but yeah, I don't think, we have not had any, and we're really going to see it here, because who am I to say if your symptoms are improving or not? Our school nurses are not going to do that. So we would treat it like we would any other illness, where you have so many days that you can be out through a parent excuse, and then after that, we would require the doctor's note. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Can I, just for the board's knowledge, add one more thing that you and I spoke about regarding the special education plan? So these are students with IEPs. This does not include our 504 students, which is also a federal requirement, and it does not include our gifted students, which is another federal requirement. So that just covers the autistic learning support and emotional support kiddos. There are other kids receiving services that we get no funding for, but are still required to provide those services, which a lot of people don't realize.
And the gifted plan, there is a component of the comprehensive plan that does include gifted as part of it. So what about?
Thank you, Dr. Langel, and for the board members knew, I think Dr. Langel mentioned it, how many years have you been in the district total?
I started in two thousand and four.
So first a teacher, and then I believe like a ten-month supervisor, and now into director of students, so thank you, Dr. Langel, and your team. I know there's a big group of individuals working on all these plans, and thank you for sharing them today and the work everybody's doing to support our students. So with that, we'll move to the agenda items. The next section is finance and facilities, and before I introduce it, most of these items came out of the Mr. Boyer and the finance and facilities workshop. So again, these are fairly routine items, most to get us set up and get us moving forward. And with that, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve and ratify the following finance and facility items, and that's numbers one through five.
Do you have a motion?
Senator.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Shippers.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes.
Mrs. Savinski.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. All right, the next section is personnel and policy, and I would like to highlight and thank, I'll do just a little bit about our team's work. So we knew we had some challenging openings when we saw the retirements and resignations. One area, which is our high school allergy, we weren't able to fill this year, and luckily, the teacher agreed to spend an extra year contracted, so we were fortunate. We also know Pennsylvania has a shortage of educators, so I'd really like to say thank you to all the team members. We worked early, very aggressively to prioritize this with a lot of time, and it's a whole team, that's Dr. Woodruff, Dr. Jones, Dr. Redkay, several teachers were involved, and other personnel to, you know, sit in on, you know, interviews and help us identify candidates. So what you will see is a number of positions here that we have candidates to present to you, we also have an interim transfer on the list, so really a good amount. We still have some hiring work to do. Mr. Arns has prepared a flyer, this was something last year we were able to use both on social media, but also just a lot of word amount between educators to, you know, let people know, so we are updating this flyer with the remaining positions, and certainly with the Dr. Langel's information, the paraprofessionals as well. So we'll try to do some additional recruiting, but I do want to thank the team for the hard work and the ability to present some really strong candidates. Big shoes to fill, but really some strong teachers here and other personnel to come in and help us move forward. So with that, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve and ratify the following personnel and policy items as presented, and that is numbers one through seven.
Do you have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Michael, Mr. Boyer?
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Sorry, I think I'm on delay.
So we're just roll call to, it's your vote.
I can't understand you, I'm so sorry.
But we're, Ms. Rodriguez, we're doing a roll call vote on the personnel and policy, so if you're able to hear that, the vote would either be yes or no, if you're able to, and that's for the personnel and policy items as presented.
Yes, I did hear about these, so yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shippers.
Hi.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes.
Mrs. Savinski.
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there any old business?
Did you, are you not doing the voting yet, or is that a bit?
That was included in.
It was.
That was my fault.
Sorry. Oh, okay. I thought that was the second piece, I have to abstain from that vote.
Okay, so.
And here's my document.
Just bear with me a second. So, so Mr. Boyer, we just voted for items one through seven, my question to you is, could we, could we rescind that vote? And we do have Mr. Kellen here, who might be able to give us advice. Could we rescind that vote and then re-vote for numbers one through five and seven, and then separately number six? So would we have to rescind the vote that was just approved on one through seven to then handle them in two chunks? So I know you're not a solicitor for overall, but.
I think, no objection, you could just change the first vote, just do one through five and seven.
So if there's, if there's no objection from the group, that first vote would cover numbers one through five and number seven, so omitting number six, is that agreeable to the group, and then we'll vote on that separately? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Kellen, for being here, appreciate that. So with that, I'll ask for a motion, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve and ratify the following personnel and policy items, and that is just number six. So we'll take that vote separately. So we would need a motion in a second, and then we can take the vote.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So I'm abstaining because I'm on the bottom list of the volunteers to be approved tonight, and I was just going to say, when we do roll call, normally what we do is you would just say, I abstained due to a conflict or.
Thank you, because I'm on the list.
It's my apologies, I meant to get that in my middle, my apologies.
It's all good, it's all good. All right. Roll call. All right. Roll call, Mr. Boyer.
Mr. Shippers.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes.
Mrs. Zavinsky.
I abstain because I am on the list of volunteers to be approved tonight.
Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion passes six to...
Thank you.
And thank you for volunteering.
Any old business? Any new business? The write-to-know requests are listed. Any other updates from organizations? I don't see WEDA here. So if there is nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any one opposed? All right. Meeting is adjourned. And again, we do have a brief executive session after this meeting for a legal...